Welcome. First, we'd like to observe a moment of silence to open the meeting. And I would ask that you keep one of our employees in your thoughts and prayers, Miss Susie Waring, in our HR department. Her husband passed away last week, Friday. Just remember, Miss Susie, and the girls Erica and Celeste, in your thoughts and prayers. I know they would appreciate it. Join me if you would, please. Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the February 10th, 2020 work session meeting agenda. Without objection, we will approve the agenda. Agenda for February 10th is approved. Next is a special presentation, the Seneca Jeep Fest. Miss Shannon Lusk, are you there? There you are. Come on up.
Would you like us to go?
Right there, she's fine.
We have two very special guests with us today. We have Melissa Kane, I know her as Missy, I know Missy. We graduated high school together, so we go way, way, way back. We don't tell you how long, but way back. And, yeah. And Donnie Biggin White. You may know him as Biggin, that's one. That's how I was introduced back in September to him for the very first time. But they are huge supporters of our preschool intervention program. They are, they both coordinate the Jeep Fest that's held in Seneca every September. And we're also fortunate to have three awesome preschool intervention teachers with us as well. We have Aldra Morris from Farrokh Elementary School. We have Sarah Rochester from Wahalet Elementary School. And Kim Hildig from Northside Elementary School as well. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to Biggin, I guess, right?
Guys, every year, we thought we were going to step up with Seneca Jeep Fest. And along with Lakin Lee Prosser, Doggy Brand, Cia, Sunken, all our sponsors. We have you all two checks for five thousand dollars. Toby.
This money is greatly appreciated. Of course, as we know, early, early learning is a passion of mine, but it's also a passion of these wonderful ladies, and also for these two wonderful people that coordinate Jeep Fest. This money goes to support their classroom instruction. I don't know if you guys want to tell what you've spent money off in the past from this.
We've already talked this year about needing more cube chairs, and that's what we've done that in the past, and we've talked about it again. They're, they're good sturdy plastic chairs that have an edge to them, and it gives the kids a nice sturdy spot to know that that's their own.
We've done a trampoline, a mini trampoline in class to use for like rainy day activities. The rewards, they just love jumping on it to get some energy out. And a hot scotch mat to play games with, and to learn to count, and things like that. And then just classroom supplies, stampers, and ink pads, and all those wonderful things.
Kim, of course, Miss Hildig is brand new to our school district this year, so we're glad to have her at Northside. And the preschool intervention programs, that's for our three and four-year-old students. They're, they qualify through special education for early developmental delays. I know a huge, a lot of this money goes to support autism awareness is where this money goes. So our early learners get an early start on education, and getting them ready for kindergarten. So I thank you very, very much for your support of our school district.
Appreciate y'all help that day.
Thank you so much. Yes, and our teacher volunteered at Jeep Fest as well, so we were able to see firsthand. That's a huge undertaking, and that's a huge event, and we had a great turnout back in September as well.
We had seven hundred Gs.
Seven hundred. Downtown Seneca. So next year, everybody come out and look for Jeep Fest.
September 12th.
September 12th. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance in school highlight from Westminster Elementary and West Oak High. Who's going first here? Okay.
Attention, salute, flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very good job, guys. Dr. Blackwell and Miss McAllister, which one is, who's going first? Okay.
Dr. Blackwell's going to go first, because West Oak and Seneca are playing basketball tonight, a make-up game that got rescheduled for the second time on Saturday, so he's going to try to hustle out of here and get to a basketball game.
He didn't tell you we wanted to talk with you for a while after the meeting was over?
Well, we still do that. I really wanted to go ahead of them, because they're tough to follow. Tonight, I just have a few items that I'd like to share with you, some celebrations in our academics, some things with our guidance department, athletics, and then new programs and upcoming events. In regards to academics, I'd like to brag on our students. In U.S. history, we are currently up 7% in our EOC scores from where we were last spring. We're up 3% in biology, and we are right at 69%, which is holding strong as to where we were last spring in Algebra I. In regards to EOCs, we also started last year with an EOC celebration, where anyone that passes one of their EOCs, we, we treat them to a pizza and ice cream and games, and we set out about hour and a half within the day for them to do that. And this year, we had 298 students that qualified for that event, and came out and had a good time. And they're very appreciative. They all, you know, they appreciate being recognized for their accomplishments. From our guidance department, of the 174 seniors that we have, there were 100, there's currently 155 college acceptances, but that's 114 individual students that have been accepted to a college. We had our camp event, where, Miss McCormick actually came to that event, where we celebrated all the students that had filled out the college applications, and we actually had 100% participation in that. Every student filled out at least one college application during that time, which is important to make sure that they're aware of their opportunities and things that they can do after high school. We have 16 new local scholarship sponsors. We have taken 235 to the Swoon College Fair. We've had a financial aid night this year, dual enrollment informational meetings, and it's IGP season, for those of you that know what that is, where we're working on our schedules for next year, and our career counselor has met with every single student and their parents to make sure that we know what career path they would like to go towards, their dual enrollment options, and their career center completer pathways, to make sure that we give them every opportunity to be successful. In athletics, our Lady Warrior Basketball Team's currently tied for second place in the region with Pendleton High School. Our boys' basketball team's currently tied for second place in the region with Tattersville, after we upset them last Friday night. It's a very exciting game. Our wrestling team has won seven consecutive region titles. We had six individual region champs, and all 14 of our starters qualified for upper state. Our baseball team is currently ranked sixth in the preseason poll for the state, and as you probably read the papers, we're currently appealing a reclassification for football, so that we can give our student athletes the best opportunity that we can. New programs and upcoming events, we have a mentor program that we started with Farrokh Elementary last week, where there are five of our students that are going one hour a week to mentor some of the elementary students at Farrokh. They were interviewed for that position, and then they have mentor training through Farrokh, and we currently are in plans to have similar programs with Westminster Elementary and West Oak Middle School. We have the Men of Color Summit coming up on March 3rd and 4th, where I'm taking 18 young men to that. We took 12 last year, and it was a great experience. And this year, if you've, if you've seen this, you'll know how exciting this is, but the guest speaker this year is Magic Johnson. So that's going to be a great experience. Coach Geth actually said he's going to be pushing people out of the way to get to the front of the line, so if any of you know Coach Geth, he won't have to push hard. We also have a career signing day coming up on April 15th, and we, we currently have 15 students signed up for that, but I'm confident that number's going to, going to grow. But four military branches will be recognized, COGO, Jet Commercial, S-Tech, Performance Sports, Action Automotive, Brooks, Brock's Automotive, two cosmetology students, and a grading company will all be present for those students that have already signed up with careers and going down that career path. So, do you have any questions about any of that? Just wanted to share some of the good things we have going on with West Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. Mr. McAllister.
Good evening. I'm Paige Lowry, Assistant Principal at Westminster Elementary. And Sherri and I are honored to, and so proud, to highlight our students and some of our teachers and faculty staff here too, tonight. We have wonderful students, parents, see a lot of them out here, guardians, and, and teachers at WES. And our students work so hard every single day in academics, but they're also learning a lot of other stuff too, and that's what we want to highlight tonight. They're learning things that hopefully will help them when they're with Dr. Blackwell at West Oak High School, getting ready to go down those career paths at college. We have chorus, Lego League, Student Council, Warrior Honors, which is similar to Junior Beta Club, our cycling team, the bowtie club. Those are just a few of the offerings that we have at our school that we want to celebrate.
If you come to our school and go in the classrooms, you will be greeted by a student with a good firm handshake. They'll look you in the eye and tell you their name and what's going on in the classroom. We think that's real important. Even though they're working on math and reading and all that kind of stuff, we still want them to understand that those kinds of things are so important to open the world up before them. Our students also understand, when they leave our campus, just look at them, aren't they perfect? They understand when they leave our campus that they represent Westminster Elementary. And because of that pride, they are so well behaved. It doesn't matter if they go into Walmart with their mom and daddy, or if they're going on a field trip with the school, they realize that pride, pride is so important, so they're very well behaved. We've had several people call us from Stone Mountain, and Atlanta, and a couple other places, when we took our children on field trips, they called us back about eight in the afternoon and said, "We want to let you know how well behaved we thought your class was." And that means so much. So, talk about pride. I'll tell you what we have it. Tonight, two of our groups are going to share with you, because we can't share it all, we'll save some till next time. One is Miss Yudi with our engineering class, which is so popular, the students and parents love it. And the other is Officer Overton and Mr. Lay are going to share our bowtie club with you, and they're going to teach something. It's all yours, guys.
Good evening. My name is Miss Yudi. I am the engineering teacher and GT teacher at Westminster Elementary School, and I'm very excited about sharing with you. I've met a few of you already. We have a lot of fun going on. I'm a true believer in hands-on learning. I think that's just the way you learn better. When we first started, we were saying, "What is an engineer?" And so I put up on our wall, "What describes an engineer?" And it's solving problems, asking questions, using tools, observing and wondering why, and many other things. And that's just that they can be an engineer. In the engineering lab, we do the design process. We teach them from the very beginning, how to ask, plan, imagine, create, and the most important gear of all is improve. And I told all my students that, in my room, "I hope you fail the first time." The reason is, because it gives them a chance to improve what they're working on, and find the mistakes that they make. And they can problem solve with their peers, and they keep going back until they do find a solution on their own, and they just show a lot of pride. Kids learn by doing. And in this room, we, we do things with challenges, we do things with real-world scenarios, and we do things with academic, to encourage what they're learning in their classroom. First, I'll give them the problem. I say, "Here's your problem," and then I step back and I'm now their facilitator. They come together and they imagine, or they brainstorm with their team. What can we do? They sketch their idea. Before they can do anything, they have to show me what they sketched, so they have some plan action to go to. Once I give them that approval of the plan, I say, "Okay, now's the year to create." And in there, it's their room. They can use any materials that we have available, and they work together, collaborate. They talk, they plan, and then sometimes I say, "Miss Yudi, doesn't work. What do I do?" And I'm like, "I don't know. What do you think?" And I step back and let them try to solve it. And by that, it usually comes out much bigger and better results, and that's the improved gear that we always talk about. Let me introduce you to some of our students, who are going to tell you about some of the units that they have studied this year. Please.
Hi, my name's Ally and...
I'm Chloe Black. Earlier this year, Miss Yudi introduced us to biomimicry. It imitates what nature has already figured out. Take this octopus, it knows how to camouflage itself at any time. I thought we could design toys or vehicles that could camouflage itself for the military. We learned how to code, which means computer-assisted design. We made 3D shapes in CAD to represent our animals. Miss Yudi then printed it out on 3D, on a 3D printer. Miss Yudi, without Miss Yudi ready, what have... This, this is why we thank Miss Yudi each day to let us have an engineering class at West, Westminster Elementary.
Hi, my name is Luke DeCuyne, and this is my friend Jerry Duncan. Port Fred built bridges in the distance as strong it was by placing weight on them. Our bridge was seven, holds five bags of beans without collapsing. We learned that different types of supports are very important in keeping the bridge from collapsing under pressure. And we have Miss Yudi, State Engineering Teacher, and she is a very good engineering teacher.
My name is Fisher Moore. An engineer, Miss Yudi taught us about Lego robots. We got to choose, we got to choose which robot we wanted to build. Then we used a map called D to code and program the robot. Once we wrote the code, we were able to see our Lego robot in action.
And what belong with the Lego robots is they're learning the Lego League. They have to code, learn how to code. I don't help them. They have to figure it out, and then they have to make it work. And if it doesn't work, they have to go back to that improvement gear, figure it out, and write the code so it will work and do what it's supposed to do. Good job.
Hi, I'm Annie Dolls. These Lego simple machines involve gears, actels, and special rubber bands like this one. When you turn the handle, the leather machine turns big people at the top. The second graders also built simple machines out of water bottles.
Hi, I'm Annie Dolls, and I'm Mia Brassen. This great research inventions that were made during the Industrial Revolution. Miss Yudi let us pick up one of the inventions we wanted to make. We used recycled materials on other paper products. This project was to help us understand the Industrial Revolution when we studied it in our classroom. Here are three inventions that were made, the cotton gin, the camera, and the sewing machine. Other students made submarines, telescopes, cars, and boats. We are very thankful for Miss Yudi and everything she does for us.
Hi, my name is Lou Cameron.
This is Kay McCarry.
At the beginning of the year, we made paper to represent regions of South Carolina. We dipped a screen in a paper solution and let it dry. Miss Yudi made puzzle pieces of each region. We glued each region in a different colored paper to complete the puzzle of South Carolina. Later, she introduced us to snap circuits, because we were soon studying electricity. It was so much fun.
Half the students, the second grade boy and girl, they each have their own vegetable. For several weeks, they would water and plant some weed with air. Their floor was paved with vegetables. Thanksgiving, the students harvested their crops and enjoyed all their vegetables at a second-grade harvest celebration with their teacher and the students. They learned what form, what form to take in your world.
The greatest benefit of engineering STEM is that it fosters that level of learning. Instilling passion and drive to learn is the most crucial age during the elementary years. These are just a few of the projects that we've done in the lab. We've got plenty more coming. Some students that do not do well in classroom thrive in the engineering lab, because they can do the hands-on. They can demonstrate, they understand the content being taught using their hands, but maybe not during a test. And so sometimes, we use those grades in the engineering lab as a grade in our classroom just to validate, they do know the content. The kids learn how to collaborate, they bring new perspective to the table each time they work together, they problem solve, and they work as a team. Getting students excited about coming to school is why I love what I do. Thank you very much.
I'm Officer Overton. I'm the school resource officer at Westminster Elementary. This is my first year full-time at Westminster. Past few years, I've been doing all the elementary schools in the area, and once I became the full-time SRL at Westminster, I wanted to do something to kind of help these kids become excellent young men in their school, their homes, and their community, and try to learn from me and Mr. Lay here, just kind of what we've been through in our lives. And also Coach Carson is a part of our group, but he has baseball and other things to kind of be here tonight. But just kind of want to, from our past experiences, and help these young men become the best leaders that they can be down the road in the future. And I believe, if we can start them off at this, at this age, learning the proper, the proper tools, then when the struggles do come, it's going to be a lot more easier for them to handle in the long run. With that said, we've got a couple, couple guys that are going to do some, got some, some things I prepared to say.
Hi, I'm Brian Kowahal of Westminster Elementary School. I am part of the Bowtie Club. We are learning how to be the leaders of our school. After everyone gets here, then we talk about how our week is going so far. After that, we talk about how to be kind to everyone, be responsible, be prudent, bullying, and promote character traits. Every day, we practice what we learned with our classmates and teachers. Have a good afternoon.
My name is Grant Smith, and I'm here today with the Westminster Elementary Bowtie Club. I have, in Bowtie Club, I have learned a lot. One of my favorite topics is about adversity. Adversity is when you have a great plan of what you are going to do, but something goes wrong. When we face challenges, we have to overcome adversity. If you make a bad ground test, instead of getting mad and upset, you could work harder and study more. I am proud to be a member of the Westminster Elementary Bowtie Club.
Now, I'd like to show you how to tie a tie.
Look here.
I have no idea.
Ah!
I have to see. I found this with these sticks. Now go show them how to tie a tie.
Great, I have no idea now.
You have no idea? So you dip, you put the mixer on the left, then you put, now you gotta over it like that, and I gotta pull it up. And you gotta put, and it's all like a...
Great job.
Well, that's very good, you know.
Thank you for showing this.
Hi, Jim.
All right, that's the kind I need. Thank you. Thank you. Well, you, you learned to do that much younger than I did, I promise you. I was a lot older than you. Thank you very much. I'm Jay Really. I liked the way that board meeting was done. I liked that.
Thank y'all.
You did that on the other side.
Hell, we always should have done that too.
Excellent job.
But I'm just very thankful for Miss McAllister, the Westminster, and Miss Lowry, allowing us to do something like this with these young men. And not just them, from, from these two, and all the people behind the scenes, from Miss Pickens, who's helped me get this stuff ordered and, and stuff in line, to the lunch ladies who provide breakfast for us every morning when we meet. They do a great job, or a great job. We couldn't do it without them, and thank y'all so much. We were honored and blessed to be here. They were sweating bullets, we've been practicing the past two days. We actually had the library set up like the, like it is in here, so they could practice and stuff, so they've been sweating bullets, but I thought they did a great job. And in years to come, I hope it builds into something bigger. We're looking into having these guys kind of do a big, our big brother, little brother, where they're going to adopt a, a fourth grader, and take them under the wing, and kind of show them the ways of what it is to be, to be leader. You can still be popular, but you can still do the right things at the same time. But thank y'all so much for, for your time and having us here today. Appreciate you coming.
We have the greatest officer in the whole county, all over town. And Mr. Lay, he's our facilities team specialist over at the school, and they spend a lot of extra time for us, and Miss Yudi spends a lot of extra time, so I just appreciate everything they do. Thank y'all so much.
I'm not here, don't get, I will do the engineering second, so I'll get your guys first. Y'all just kind of jump in there with them. You'll get it.
Please.
I'll send you the tissue.
Oh, I love you, sorry.
All right. Smile. Oh, look at the other one. Thank you. All right. Engineer team. Jordan was in the front, Oliver was in the back. All right, this is what we've got right here. A young lady in a sort of purple in the back, I can't see her. You can't see my phone, I can't get you in here. There we go, yes ma'am. She would have been shaking, Ms. McCall. All right, on three. One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Well, thank you, each of you, every one of you did a great job. And thank you for what each of you do to make Westminster L and the whole community a better place. Thank you. If any of you need to leave now because you do have school tomorrow morning, feel welcome to leave at your convenience, so it won't offend us at all.
We're used to it.
Thank you, thank you for letting us borrow it.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Gibson, anyone sign up? No one? Okay. Discussion items, the January financial report. Ms. Orr.
Just to point out again, this is the January report, but it includes collections through December. So we are, as of the end of December, as of the end of January, we are still lagging behind about seven million dollars more expenditures than we have revenue. I checked with the treasurer today. We're due power, always wait till January 15th today, and so we collected twenty, or they collected twenty-four and a half million dollars for us in January. So that'll be coming in the next few days, and we'll be replenishing our coffers a little. So any questions about that part of the report? Is there a last? Workers' compensation update, Mr. Rukat, and just ask for a little bit of information about how we're doing. So I asked Mr. Orr to give us some information about the costs. This is one of our most expensive items outside of salaries as far as our operations goes, about eight hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year right now. We are, that's based on the prior three years of losses. So we've got a couple of good years and then a bad year, and so it just, it keeps it pretty high. Mr. Orr works really hard. He works with the insurance company. They're looking, they're doing walkthroughs and looking for things that we can improve, things that aren't safe. And he does a really good job of that, trying to manage our losses. And you can see this year, we've had a hundred and nine incidents. Fifty of those required medical attention, and fifty-nine were just for district or family. And that is higher than last year, because we're only halfway through the year. And the whole year last year, we had ninety-eighty, forty-seven that required medical attention.
Are most of those new cases, different individuals, or some?
Sometimes we have repeaters, but it's usually, and most of them are minor things, you know, not, not big things. But you only need one or two really big things to make that loss substantial. I'm sorry that Mr. Rukat's not here, since he asked for the information, but we'll give it to him.
And this is actual dollars?
Yes, actual dollars. That's what we're paying for a year of coverage for workers' comp, eight hundred and fifty-six.
And is your coverage, like for next year, based on your experience?
Three years, yes.
Three years, it goes up or down?
One year drops off, another one comes off.
Chloe, do you have many that invite, that you have to get, go to court to settle? Do you have many of those?
No, I wouldn't say we have many.
But you have a few.
We do have some, one or two occasionally, yes.
Very few go all the way to court, but there are many cases that get into arbitration, and, you know, negotiation, that kind of thing. It's a, it's a difficult... It's just a balancing act, because you certainly want what's best for your employees, but I'm just going to be honest, with fifteen hundred employees, sometimes we have employees that have in the past looked to exploit the system, that kind of thing. And it's tough, but overall, I certainly know Mr. Orr works really hard to try to keep us safe, but it's, it's a challenge.
Thank you.
If I could, just to publicly introduce somebody who's here, Ms. Simmons, our assistant superintendent for instruction, is dealing with a family medical issue, so she's been out of the office for a couple of weeks. And while she's out of the office, Ms. Liza Smith is very ably filling in for her. So Liza's here tonight, and she's going to share with us standard-based timeline.
Ms. Smith?
I have two members of our instruction department here to help us with the update. We have Ms. Lauren Harrison. She is our ELA, Special Studies, and Word Language Specialist. And then Ms. Elizabeth Crane, she is our Science and Math Specialist as well. Standard-based timeline is kind of their world. This is what they've kind of been focused on throughout this year, and we began this process last year as well. So just kind of an update on where we are in the process and what we've been doing. The root of it is really to increase collaboration with our teachers. So we have this quote, "The most valuable resource that all teachers have is each other." So without collaboration, our growth is limited to our own perspectives. So the why behind the timelines, this is something that Ms. Simmons had voiced throughout our communication with the SDOC staff as we started this initiative last year. Our why started with benefits for our students. We know in our population of students, we have transient students who kind of bounce from area to area. And what we were finding is, you know, what one teacher teaches at Waha La L in January may be different than what someone is teaching at Westminster L. And so we're finding that students were getting gaps in their instruction because we were not all on the same pace or guide for our long-range plans that are teacher for instructing throughout the year. So we saw a huge benefit for our students who are moving around to help prevent some of those gaps. Also, we talked about the benefits for teachers and collaboration. So this would give them a chance to, no matter what area of school they're at, they can talk to other teachers within the district and help plan together and kind of lighten that load, where they can share resources, activities, maybe assessments that they've seen that were beneficial in their own classroom, that they can share with everyone else as well. It created, would create consistencies among the schools, a development of standards experts. We've kind of noticed that we needed to refocus on the standards, you know, the standards that by law we're supposed to teach. So it's just having that refocus on what are those standards that we're teaching, and what is the true meaning behind that standard, and making sure we're teaching it to the intent that is written. Also, accountability for teaching those standards, like I said, that are required at the state, and a promotion of personalized learning for students, knowing that we really got to target the individual needs of the students. So once we're standards experts, then we can break that standard down and really target it wherever that student may be, whether they're on target for their grade level, or they're a little above, or maybe a little below. If we know that standard well, then we can really scaffold it to where they need to be, to get them on grade level, or to push them even further. All right, Elizabeth's going to take us through kind of what it looks like, just so you can get an idea.
We have a shared Google Drive for all of our teachers in Oconee County, and so the first thing that we did is that we established that so that we have one central location for teachers to access easily. I'm not sure if these are, these links are going to work, because I'm not logged in. Yeah. Yeah. We'll log in real quick, and then we can show you what it looks like. So when a teacher logs in, she will, or he will have access to all of these folders. As you can see, we have elementary, middle, and high. When you go into elementary, it's going to give you K through five. So if you go into a grade level, you have a landing page. This is, in elementary, we have math and ELA, standard-based timelines. So this is the ELA and math. These are all of the unit plans. Up to date, we have through third quarter. Teachers on our work group committees are working toward fourth quarter plans. Those will be posted soon. And then when you click on a, when you click on a unit plan, this is what a teacher would pull up. So this is kind of just a long-range plan for a unit of instruction in math. This is unit three, so it gives them a suggestion of thirteen days for Foundations of Multiplication. It walks them through how to use the document, gives them access to the standards and the support document for math from the state. It has clarifying statements. It has I-know-I-can statements, essential vocabulary, and then suggested resources that teachers can use, or they don't have to use those. Those are just, those are left up to the teacher. So all of our unit plans for ELA, math, science, social studies, they all look the same, so no matter what grade level you looked at, it would have a similar format. And then the landing pages are the same also, so no matter what grade level you were to see, it would also look the same as well.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
You may be seeing in the paper, we've had a couple of employees, and in one case, a former disgruntled employee, who wrote letters into Tell Willie, that wonderful column, that, anyway, people have complained about the standard-based timeline. And I still think it's a good thing. Some teachers have felt that they have been rushed through units and things like that, but my question is always the same. If you're rushed and you want to slow down, how do you plan to finish the standards before the end of the year? Because we've created this timeline, and I shouldn't say we created it, teachers created it. We asked for input, we asked teachers how long they needed to teach those, those units, with the goal of finishing before the state test at the end of the year. Because if we're going to, a third-grade math student, if we're going to give them the state test at the end of the year, and the state of South Carolina has told us these are all the standards that are going to be covered on that third-grade state test, it is not good practice for us to give that test if we've not completed the standards. So if you're going to slow down, how are you going to catch up? You have to have some sort of a timeline so that the kids are exposed to what they're going to be assessed on. So I feel like our instruction department has done a really top-notch job preparing. You saw, it's not, it's not micromanaging. We're not saying, do this worksheet today, do this worksheet tomorrow, do this lecture. That's not what it is. It's just saying, you've got about thirteen days to cover this topic, or these topics. And we're letting the teachers be, still the teachers, deciding how best to deliver that content, how to assess it in most cases. It's just, it's just a guide.
And one thing in the process, when we started it last year, was the feedback. And so we, we pulled samples from all across the state, and we had a session with our admin teams at principals' meetings and AP meetings, and we said, look at these samples. What do you like? What do you not like? What, what aspects do you want to be, have included in these types of timelines? And we got that feedback from our admin teams, and then we narrowed it down, and then we said, okay, now take this to your teachers, and let your teachers look at these samples, and let them tell us what were strengths, weaknesses that they saw in there, what are things that they wanted, what are things they did not like about it. And so we got that feedback last year, and then we made tweaks again. And one thing that we really want to keep in our forefront is just to make sure we constantly give those teachers that opportunity for feedback. At the end of last year, we were asking them, okay, here, here are these samples. We let you look at them throughout the year. We've made the adjustments that you've asked on pacing, and now we need you to look at them again. Give us some more feedback. We'll adjust it. And like Dr. Florin was saying, you know, if you think we need more time teaching this unit, well then tell us that, but tell me where I can take time away from another unit, because we only have so many days in the school year. So we asked for that feedback continuously when we first started the process, and we'll highlight some more of that again, because even as we're in the process right now, we have elementary and middle, ELA, so ELA and math. At the middle school, we also have science and social studies, and then at the high school level, we have EOC courses. So throughout this year, we are still asking for that feedback and help us make those revisions so that we make it a workable document that is beneficial for teachers.
So speaking of feedback, we had a Google form that was created. We sent it out. Teachers were able to answer survey questions to provide individual feedback, but they were also at our, October is the 21st, in-service day, they met in groups. So we had groups of teachers that were also able to meet collaboratively and discuss the timelines, and provide us with some group feedback. We will continue to do that, teachers, right now, but we have a window open for second, non-leaks feedback. So those surveys have already been sent out. They'll have until the 14th to submit those, and then we'll continue doing that for third quarter and then for fourth quarter. At the end of first quarter, teachers were also able to submit resources to our work groups to be vetted, to see if we wanted to add more resources to our unit plans for teachers to use if they chose to do so.
So that's one of the things we want to do, is make sure that we are acknowledging our teacher expertise and taking, you know, taking that from them as much as possible, because we do want to be a living, breathing document where we know, you know, we're going to revise as needed. We saw these students work this evening, and boy, it made my heart work. And I just kept thinking, this is why we're doing this project. It's really important. So one of the things that we, or some of the things that we've seen as the positive effects on instruction are, as Liza mentioned earlier, increased collaboration among our teachers. And that has gone over very well with our teachers. They are citing more instructional focus on their standards, which is great, and they're discussing the true intent of the standards and really looking at it at a deeper level. They are also becoming very aware, there's an increased awareness of instructional time, and they're getting very protective of that instructional time, and really weighing out, you know, is this a, another wonderful learning opportunity that's, that's worth, you know, stepping away from the instructional times? They make those decisions very purposefully now. And we did already highlight consistency, because we're seeing that across the board. We also have talked about the awareness of the need for database decisions. We are really focusing on that in our department this year and across our school district. We have seen common... We have seen common long-range plans among grade levels where that collaboration has led to them working together and refining their plans. And it's also allowed us to provide assistance for teachers within instructional resources. So as you saw in the sample that Elizabeth showed you, there are suggested instructional resources or possibilities really, and the teachers are not, they can use them if they want to, it gives them an idea of some instructional resources, but they're not tied to those. It's entirely up to the teacher's discretion.
So we kept talking about feedback and we keep giving them, giving teachers opportunity to take their survey, give us the feedback. So we just wanted to highlight some elementary, middle, and high school feedback. So the elementary first, some things that we just noted from this one and we touched on it a little bit is just more intention in their planning, you know, being more intentional with how they're planning the whole group instruction or small group instruction to ensure they're covering all the standards that needs to be covered for the year. A lot of feedback that we've gotten is just how it is a positive thing for the students who are transferring in because now as a teacher instead, when I was teaching elementary school and I'd get a student to come in, I had to assess that student and know, hey, what have you been taught so far? What did you do in science? What did you do in ELA at your old school? What did you do in math, social studies? And I had to kind of get an inventory, what does this student already know when they came to me? But now, when they transfer within district, we're all on the same page. We might be all maybe a day or so in our units, that type of thing, but for the most part, if it's January, I can know when this student came to me, they've covered all these other units. Now I may need to assess them just to make sure they've mastered those standards maybe, but I know they've at least seen that content and I don't have to spend as much time trying to figure out where that student is. So that's been a real positive for those transient students moving in and out. And in this quote, they even point out, even for our GT, our gate students and resource, knowing that we're all on the same page and that collaboration among the Gen Ed teacher and the Special Ed teacher and the GT teacher, being able to collaborate and know what they're studying within the general ed classroom. Also, like Lauren pointed out, is that potential for some sample lessons or activities where I'm struggling with a unit or I'm a new teacher or new to a grade level, I can go in and see, look, here are some good resources that can help me get started with teaching this unit. It's not mandated, but I see there are potential resources that I could use. Here, they talk about, I'll read the first sentence, it provides focused accountability to all teachers for all standards, which is incredible. That came from a teacher. Hey, even they see, it's incredible because now we're all going to be accountable for those standards that we have to teach.
So we also want to make sure that we showed you feedback from across all three levels. And some of our middle school teachers also focused on collaborating, collaborating together and realizing that importance of networks because it's not just about who's in your hallway or even who's in your building, but across buildings now, they can look at it in a positive and meaningful way. And they also talked about striving to incorporate all of the various ideas and topics. And in some cases, it might be a little overwhelming for them, but they're working through that productive struggle to find exactly what's working with them. The last middle school sample we wanted to share is this first part, I love this. We enjoy and appreciate the timeline as a schedule and utilizing the accountability provided to ensure that proper time was spent on standards and material and that recognize it as a, as an incredible asset as we continue to work through the process of it. Oh, I have one more middle school, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, structured schedule. So it does help keep them on a structured schedule and help them to develop those instructional strategies because now it's not a question of, of what the topics are because that comes from our standards or what the skills are coming from our standards, but really, how can we do that well for our students to meet all of their needs?
Some of the high school feedback is very interesting to me because the teacher admitted that it's very easy to get bogged down in content that they really enjoy teaching. And so having the timeline keeps them kind of in check for making sure that they get to the things that they may not enjoy as much as some of the other topics within their curriculum, especially if it's an EOC class like biology. Having a collection of resources, teachers have said is very helpful, like we've said prior to this. Teachers don't have to use it, it's available if they would like to use it. There's lots of information in the resource section for teachers to go through and all of those resources have been vetted so teachers know that they're quality material that they can put in front of their students. And then this one I thought was important because it's a resource and kind of a long-range plan slash pacing guide for new teachers, it's very helpful. So if you have a brand-new teacher that comes in straight out of college, it kind of gives them a baseline for them to develop their own kind of long-range plan and it gives them a starting point with some resources that may not have been available to them prior, prior to, to that. Some of the concerns that we're addressing is just meeting the needs of all students. So we're looking at whole group instruction, small group instruction, individual personalized instruction. We're providing some professional development opportunities, so we'll have some differentiated instruction sessions in our summer institute this summer. We are doing guided reading professional development and I've been extremely active with guided math so far this year. So we're, we're still providing all of those professional development opportunities.
So another set of private, you know, these are the concerns that we're hearing, there are, I would say, more challenges, there's, we're still working with them on, is time and time is always a challenge for a teacher, but specifically, you know, that we ask them for their feedback on how long does this take or did this, did you finish with this unit a little earlier so maybe we can adjust that? And that is why that feedback is so critical and we really continue to ask teachers for feedback to, to try and refine this as we go and make those revisions and we'll continue to do that. We also will do that as new standards come in line, we'll be doing that as well. It's an ongoing process. And then the other kind of question with time is really being on track, teachers are a little worried about, well, what if I get a little bit behind? And as Dr. Thorland so ably said earlier, it is about, you know, it's going to take you around this many number of days, but it makes you very aware of the amount of time you need. And so they, we have also asked and worked with our administrators to make sure that if, you know, if you notice in a classroom that you're observing this teacher and they're a little off track, have that, that's a great opportunity, have that follow-up conversation because the teacher will be able to explain to you what's happening there and it really kind of keeps us all in the loop because we're all responsible for these children and want to help them all grow.
So where we are now, we're continuing to work on revising the current standards-based timelines that we have right now, again, at elementary, ELA and math, middle school, ELA, math, science, social studies, and EOCs at the high school. So we're constantly revising those with the feedback surveys that Lauren and Elizabeth are getting, but we also have other courses working on their standards-based timelines this year and those are all teacher-based work groups that are coming together. We kind of polled our administrative teams and like tell us, who are your best teachers in these areas? Who can give us the best information? And they, we pulled that group together and they're just building it. And we've built into our district-level PD days this year, giving them that time to come together and collaborate and work on those Phase Two, as we're calling them, timelines for other courses. And so hopefully we'll continue that work over the summer and they can continue to have those ready to roll out for next school years also. And then again, in the next school year, we'll keep asking for that feedback and keep revising because that's one thing as we go through this process, we know there's going to have to be revision all throughout the process until we get it where we really like it. And then we can really hone in on those resources and make those really meatier, I guess, and more valuable for the teachers and can increase that.
If I could add one clarification, when we're talking about constantly revising work, I want to make sure that we're clear that when we say we are revising that, we're not changing it every day for the teacher. We are revising it on the back end and rolling it out very systematically so it doesn't become too overwhelming for the teacher or things change midstream. We want to make sure we are intentional with that as well.
Right, so we, like, we are in second nine weeks. So the revision is going to be for first nine weeks. So you have taught it now, based on what your experience was teaching that first nine weeks worth of units, what do we need to revise? Is there order in the standards that you see would be more beneficial for the students and their understanding? Or like Elizabeth had some concerns where we see that in some math units in fourth and fifth grade, we need to add time to some units because the students were not getting to mastery as quickly as we thought they would. So that backend is what Lauren was referring to.
And what do you do with students that maybe not, doesn't grasp it quite as quickly as others, but yet you've still got that timeline to finish? How do you handle that?
That's where we talk to our teachers on the focus of the standards-based timeline is your whole group instruction. So what I'm delivering to my whole class is on my timeline, but when I break into those small groups where Lauren and Elizabeth were talking about the guided reading or the guided math, that's where I'm using my data to make a database decision and saying, okay, these students are falling below here. And so in my small group instruction, I'm targeting them at their individual needs.
So you'll have time built in for that small group just for those students?
Yeah, and that's where you really hone in on those individual needs of your students there. And that's where we see that we've got to continue to spring in that professional development up to our teachers so it just sits fresh on their mind and so they can really become experts at doing that small group instruction.
The instruction has to be both and, it can't be either or. If a child is behind, we can't just say, okay, forget the third grade standards, we're going to go back and teach you second grade standards that you missed. Because then they're getting further behind because they're missing new third grade standards. So we have to do both. Teach them third grade and then go back and remediate the second grade standards they may have missed and try to catch them back up.
But you have time, time built in to the standard timeline for...
That's, that's one of the big jobs of our instruction department right now is working with our teachers to try to help all of us become masters of doing both and not, not failing to teach the new content at the expense of remediating, oh, we've got to do both, we've got to catch students up.
And that's why teaching is so hard. Because teaching, you have to balance all of this.
Everyone was equal in Billups.
Exactly. And unfortunately, they come in at all different levels in your classroom and you have to be able to make those decisions to know what each group or each individual student in your room needs and have that balance, a balance of whole group, a balance of small group instruction, a balance of exposing to the grade level standards but also meeting the students where they are and hopefully accelerating their remediation to getting them back onto that grade level standard that we want to. But that is a, it's a balancing act and that's why it's the hardest job because teachers have to learn to balance that and meet the needs.
And I was just going to add, much of it has to do with structuring, you know, the structures are in place in your instructional time that you have. So much of it has to do with how we are actually organizing the time we have with our students. And we're working quite hard to make sure we can assist it, assist our teachers in helping our students.
Questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Thorland. That's it. Well, that concludes the open session portion of our meeting. Again, thank you for being here this evening. We do have an executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations and changes and a property update on the Central Middle School and we will return shortly with any action required by that closed session. And without objection, we will go into a closed session. We're in closed session. Thank you very much.